Looking at the wording, especially what's in parentheses, a strong emphasis on Cedar River Parkway, that this would go to the referendum vote long before we've actually agreed to the next phase of that. So, in some ways, it kind of sends the wrong message that we've already committed to that before we've had the discussion.
I think we've committed to that, though, haven't we?
I think so.
I mean, unless we're looking for a ramp to the river or something.
It's certainly been on our strategic planning, but there's been a lot of things on that that we haven't taken this strong of commitment to prior to going through the costing process. Again, I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, I hear what you're saying. Do we actually vote?
Right.
We've just been united as a council, and that gives us the
Yeah, I'm certainly not suggesting it isn't a priority.
To put the wording in here, but technically, it's an interesting point. It is the cart before the horse an inch. Yeah, but David's correct. I mean, obviously, this is one that's been able to unite the council.
Yeah, I'm certainly not suggesting that it's not a priority and that this isn't a correct funding source. It's just, are we comfortable making that bold of a statement right now without having that project move forward through?
Can we?
I have no problem removing that specific language in there. It was more of a kind of a sense of this is what we would probably use the core of it for, but I think that can be done as is being discussed with other possible options that could be used for it without naming it specifically in that area. Because what if some unforeseen reason, it can't happen for four years, five years, then we've kind of have that language almost not committing us, you know, strong emphasis on it. And it can be possibly, I wouldn't say misleading, but maybe confusing for some people when they read through it, thinking that's all it's going to be used for. So, I don't think it's an issue at all to remove that specific piece from there, because it certainly could still be used for that.
And I would look for the rest of the council to weigh in before we strike it.
I agree with Dan. I mean, I just think, you know, I agree with everyone, but I know it's a priority, but since we haven't voted on it yet, and the vote to do it might be with a different council, actually, that, you know, I would feel awkward putting it out there in a sales tax vote, and then two years later, there's a different council and they decide to go somewhere else with it, or something unforeseen comes up, and then we've had people vote on a sales tax that didn't go where they thought it was going.
Well, the question is, can it be one of the major motivations behind us wanting to approve the lost fund without having actually put that into the wording?
Yeah, absolutely, I can.
It's still a major motivation, and I'm siding with David here. Anybody have a preference on any of these three more?
I guess, you know, for me, I still feel that it's just too encompassing. I mean, it's not specific enough. Most of these, you know, it's roadway, bridge, alley, trail, river, parking, infrastructure, public safety, related. I mean, it could be, we could use it for anything we wanted to at any time we wanted to. And as a citizen, if I was going to vote for something, I wouldn't just hand over a blank check to my government. I would actually want to know what it's going for more specifically, so. Kind of like when the first sales tax that we had that was passed, it was specifically for the jail and specifically for roads. I think if we add way too much other things in there and make it too vague, I think you'll have a harder time passing it, just because just read that and they say, well, why don't we just raise taxes by 1% and get, I mean, because it covers pretty much everything. That's my complaint, I guess.
Well, I'm not necessarily in disagreement with you, but I'm looking at the three language ones, and the third one seems to be much more broad than the others. That's the one that's just the, with remainder for any lawful purpose, and that just opens it wide up.
That means, would mean anything for me.
To me, it's, I like the idea that it's focused on roadways and bridges, trails, river, that kind of thing, as opposed to being just a lawful.
I do agree with that. I would just say we should probably narrow that down, because roadways, bridges, alleys, trails, rivers, parking, infrastructure, public safety, vehicles, related equipment. I think that covers every single thing our city does. I mean, you could use that for parks or trails. You could use it for any kind of cars or public safety equipment we needed. We could use it for any road, anywhere, any kind of infrastructure at any time. We could put a new riverbank on the river. We could build a boat somewhere.
Do anything you want. I mean, that's what you want to do.
To me, it's just way too vague.
What is the lawful purposes that are allowed? Do those ones, do we have to name those ones in order?
A lot of the reason for that is, you'd be surprised how many cities have that very language verbatim in it. That's why it was there. That is the most broad. We absolutely understand it. There are a lot of places that have gone to that route. Then you yourself decide what is actually utilized for that. Gives you full reign to determine what it's served for.
Does the state ordinance, or does that restrict what the lawful purposes are?
I don't think so much. I mean, the fact that you pass it, you determine what it goes for, in a sense, but that was the most broad. That's why it was there. I mean, it's no, it's very obvious that.
The advantage of broad also for passage is, is that when you, we have many people who are super interested in the river, including myself, and in the trails. A lot of people interested in the trails, including myself. Infrastructure, yes, and the public safety vehicles. Dan, you can make a great case for that. This is broad enough to include a lot of support.
So, it's a matter of what's too broad, what's not broad enough, you know, we take the Parkway out.
It's not going to gain support. People, these are the quality of life things that people want.
Really, this doesn't have anything in it in terms, by any lawful purpose, opens it wide open. Whereas the other, by naming those, it doesn't include some things like what we use TIF for as far as business or development. In terms of that, it doesn't do anything for housing or anything that that could add.
That could be under infrastructure, though.
No, the infrastructure language and the improvement language relates to the previous word, so it'd have to be related to roadway, bridge, alley, trail, river, or parking improvements or infrastructure, not any infrastructure.
So, I guess that does kind of limit, I mean, keeps us into the like, keeping TIF for that purpose.
The bottom one, for sure. And I do, you know, I agree with the mayor that I'm in favor of all those things, too, but in all reality, we can't do every single one of these things out of this fund. I mean, it brings in a million dollars a year, so we're going to have to pick something. So, to tell the public that you're going to get all of this stuff, when in reality, it may all go to the Parkway, or it may all go a million dollars toward some new road. We can't do everything that it says in there, but.
I guess that's one question I have, is the term, are we looking at a 15, 20-year term?
I think 20 is what we would look at. The longer you can get it, the easier it is to plan your bigger infrastructure projects and have that layer in. So, if we can get 20, that would be ideal. And I think you can remove the third one. Again, that was just out there for discussion. See if you wanted that. Go ahead and get rid of the third one, then.
Is anybody against removing the third one?
No, I'm not.
Okay, so let's just.
Question, how long we're going to, it's hard for me to think out 20 years, what we would need, and yeah, maybe the first couple of years it goes for the Parkway or trails, those type of things, but 20 years from now.
Well, I asked to put retirement package in there, and it didn't go. So, that's not in there.
The third one, you could probably get it in.
Well, now we can't, so there it is.
I would just like to remind council, too, that we're talking about $500,000 a year. So, by the time you spend 75% of it on streets and bridges, the 25% that's left, if you divvy it out with these other items.
That's kind of what, that's what I was going to do, just kind of doing the math.
Oh, excuse me, yeah, a million. I apologize.
Doing the math, the 75% only covers the roadway and the bridge. That's exactly where you're going. What, as I was reading through this, trying to figure out the language, I was more about trying to determine how we could sell this, what we're going to spend it on. And so, I wondered if there's ever language on, on an annual basis, you know, there's a requirement that we propose a plan for that upcoming year or something. So, you know, I think it's understood that we'll do the 1%, but just providing the public, I guess, confidence that on an annual basis, we're going to propose what that money is used for, and maybe kind of what.
We do kind of do that.
Every year in the budget, it's projected five years out, on the local option sales tax spreadsheet.
But I was being more transparent, not transparent is the word, it's sometimes negative, but just.
Specific?
Yeah, or proactive in saying that. So, as they're thinking about it, you know, but I've got a, you know, like Mayor was saying, that, you know, I'm really passionate about the river, and I know signing this or voting for this, that every year, that's, I'm going to have an opportunity to have something in there for the river. I guess that's kind of where I was thinking. But from the math part, 25% of a million dollars is not much. So, it's not an issue, anyway.
I'd take that $150,000, not much.
In the grand scheme of things, yes, but.
Yeah, we're not going to be building interstates with that. One question I had was, you know, maybe people feel more comfortable if we didn't have related equipment?
Total budget is.
On there? I didn't know. I was just going to throw that out. Public safety vehicles and related equipment. Maybe that's a, maybe that's a requirement to have related equipment. Maybe that's the biggest part that we would want to.
It would be a council decision. The thought behind that was. No, and actually, it would be like the cages. It would be the sirens.
Related equipment to the vehicles.
Right. It would have to be, I think, whether it be the ambulance, fire, or law enforcement, would be the equipment attached to the vehicles.
Yep, okay.
Lot of time, though. Loose equipment that would be on one fire truck, it aged itself out, so when we buy a new truck, we want to replace the loose equipment, too.
Yeah, fire trucks, especially the related equipment is probably part of the truck.
Again, I was kind of the one that suggested we needed to maybe have a percentage that goes to roads, those type of things, and, you know, the more I think about it, at least, maybe 50% might be. Again, if you carve all of that off for roads, it doesn't leave a whole lot for other things. I'm getting more comfortable, I guess, with not maybe having any allocation in the language. I am a little, still a little uncomfortable with the word roadway versus residential streets, or something that pulls it away, or at least sends the message, we're not talking about thoroughfare, collector streets, those type of things. It just seems like a great source of funding for residential streets. I think that makes it easier to sell if we're a little more direct, or a little more, find a different word, or.
Yeah, that probably gives people the passion that it's going to be my street, not just roadway.
I agree with that, too.
So, what would you say instead?
Residential streets. Is that what you're thinking?
I would like it to say reconstruction of residential streets, you know, because that means we can't just patch them up. I mean, it really shows that we're going to tear them up, redo them, put down new, good streets, and maybe we can do one a year with this, or, you know, whatever.
Basic maintenance, like seal coating, would be part of the, we'd have the budget for.
I mean, we call out alleys. Why don't we call out residential streets? Do we, you know, leave roadways in there, maybe, but alleys come off residential streets?
Roadway, residential streets, bridge, skip the parentheses.
I almost wonder if we take out roadway. And that's where I would, that's, I thought, Dan, maybe I'm putting words in your mouth. That's kind of what I thought you were going, is loss will be specific to residential streets. Is that what you're thinking? Then we could leave it.
Again, not 100%, but
Yeah.
To me, if we're going to make any inroads into residential streets, this seems to be the most logical, consistent source to get into some type of reconstruction repair program. If I would go out and visit with folks, I don't know, if I say the word roadway, they would necessarily think the street out in front of their house.
Substitute streets for roadway.
Let's do that.
That's what the other cities have done, that I showed examples of.
So, we almost have it, then.
And it does give you a little, we, it doesn't have to be a residential street, but at least streets and.
But I am, I do like.
Parkway's considered a street, then I think you'd probably be okay with it, if you're wanting to use that kind of funding for that project. It's all how you interpret what that is. Is it a roadway? Is it a street?
What's the difference?
I think it's just citizen interpretation.
Yeah, I would use streets. It's probably more familiar, and I don't have a problem defining the Cedar River Parkway as a street. I don't know how others feel, but.
Go the other way, it's 10th Street, so it's just Parkway the one way, and Street the other, so.
Oh, you could rename it back to.
It's different. Parkway.
Might have to get its name changed, then, back to 10th Street something, if it has to.
Okay, so what do we have so far, replacing streets, roadway with streets, taking out the parentheses, and that's it, right?
And I'm assuming that you're all going to turn to number two?
I'd go number one.
Actually, you can take out alley, because that alley's a street. It's a public street.
I wouldn't.
It's a right away, it's a street, so get alley out of there, at least.
Again, to Carla's question, I'm, I guess I'm leaning more towards number one, where we don't have a percentage that's.
You're just identifying the things that you want the money to be spent for. You're not allocating anything among those. You're doing that on an annual basis.
To me, we'd have to pull that percentage down to 50% to really have anything left over for things that aren't street, bridge, or alley type.
That wouldn't be different than what Iowa City, you know, Iowa City has 50% going to streets, and the rest going to other things, property tax relief, and there are towns that have done that. I do think, you know, to sell it, I mean, people, people like new streets, so I think that's, they like that more than they do. You know, just.
Fire trucks, if I had to.
Random, random infrastructure projects or whatever, you know, I mean, some of it's very vague, so.
Please encourage.
You know, someone, to get people to vote, they have to want what they're voting for.
But, yeah, I mean, I would guess that different citizens put different emphases on different things, and I mean, these are all things that I would think would be improvements to the overall community, and you know, some people don't care about trails at all, and others, you know, care a lot about what their alley looks like, and I mean, I think it's, it's going to be hard to be too specific, because you've got the whole voting public who's going to be reading it. So, I think, you know, I think it's good to include all these things, but just to describe them better, which is what's happened, so that folks understand what exactly we're talking about when we're voting for this kind of tax.
Which is the inclusive part, right? I think that because we have different emphases of interest and concern in the city, by putting it like this, I think we're very close to something that would be inclusive enough to pass and and important enough. I mean, I think that, and we're united, so that, it should be, should be something that we can bring to the public.
I'd still like to see it narrowed down, you know, I still, I, just for example, if we would do the top one, and then we would decide to go ahead with the Parkway, where the Parkway is at least $9 million, so that would be all of the funds out of this for nine years would go to the Parkway, and that would leave nothing left for anything else, or, I mean.
You could do that, but I wouldn't do that. I would do a portion of it. We'd TIF part of it. We'd have different funding sources, so we didn't utilize this entire thing. I mean, it's possible you could do that.
Right. But we try to be responsible to. Out of it for, until that bond's paid off, or whatever.
You're right. We could have the option to do that, though.
But that kind of goes to Dave's that we each year.
But that would leave nothing left. So, I'm just, I'm just leery of putting language, I, you know, I understand that some people like trails, some people like rivers, so let's put it all out there, so let the vote for it. But if we never actually get around to doing anything to a river or a trail, or an alleyway, because we decide to spend it all in a different place, I mean, then you're misleading the public in that sense, so.
But this is multi-year, right? So, I mean, like, say, after eight, nine years, if you're taking care of the Parkway.
Right, but I'm just saying, half of that timeframe could be taken up from just the Parkway.
To switch to the river and the alleys and the streets.
I think you have to look at, too, what your needs are. If you have trail needs, which we do right now with the existing trails, to have repairs and things made and upgrades to the existing trails, then that's a possibility. It doesn't mean you have to use lost money. But if we don't put it in there, you can't use it for it. So, it's putting in there what you might want to use it for in the next 20 years, not necessarily if you're going to use it for it. If it's something that could be used for it, that's what you're trying to do.
I want to Dave's point, I think, through the budgeting process, we can get public input on what we should be allocating this money for, and if they see too much of an emphasis in any one of these, they've got an opportunity to help us shape that through their input, and.
And if you do a project over 10 years, you can determine how much of that each year do you want to use, what do you leave leftover. I mean, you can ebb and flow that. Yeah, it's a difficult task, because you don't want to be too broad, but you have to be somewhat to allow a lot of things to fit into there, so. I know we're going to take an official vote the 20th, I believe that's correct, to actually lock this down. So, you don't want us to take another crack at a couple of different options again, and do come back for a final vote the 20th?
Can I, just to help me, could you, so out of, let's just take like the last five years of our lost, what have we? I mean, it's all gone toward either public safety vehicles or road infrastructures over the last five years. And I know we did do some seal coating early on, but now that seal coating has all been coming out of the road use tax, so we don't longer use lost for that.
Going forward, we will not need to, because of the increase in road use tax fund allocations.
Right, yep, so.
You know, I didn't.
So, my question is, if today we're using 100% of that money just for public safety vehicles and new roads,
Go to the last.
How are we going to fit in adding, we're going to have to downsize some of that stuff, then, so that we can fit in trails and rivers and.
About $400,000 goes to paying off the fire station, yeah. So, that's where the biggest chunk of that was.
To go to the last page of the packet, it shows where lost financing has been used since '03.
Some road work, steel coats now out of it, which was about $100,000 a year. So, I mean, there's a half a million just in fire and steel coat coming out, once that pays off. Then there's been a little bit, about 10% for vehicles, ambulance, that kind of thing. And then the rest has just been different road projects throughout, so.
I know we talked about it was in the budget and stuff, but I don't, I don't remember that we actually sat down and decided, this is what we want to use lost for this year. Have we done that, or?
Just what was presented in the time the budget was done. We had 16, 17 shown out there, and it's, it's a lot of what's been used, you know, fire station.
It was a funding source, kind of it. So, that's why I was wondering if, I don't know that we would change the wording, that might make it complicated, but that's what I was talking about. I think if we give people more of an opportunity, help us drive that, it would be different, but.
Budget's a great time to talk through it and plan out a few years.
Paying off carryover projects, so, yeah.
Fire station was the biggest one, close to half of it, law enforcement center, seal coating, until we got the increase in the gas tax. I mean, there's a lot of it tied up right there.
Things fall off, I have an opportunity to actually shape it more.
It's good that, then.
Absolutely.
Somehow, I don't know, that's probably complicated, but if people knew that would happen in the future, that maybe they didn't have any input in the past, they will in the future, because things are rolling off. That might make a difference.
Okay, so next meeting, if we have some wording that we could formally kind of adopt, is that?
For one option, though, if I'm, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding you guys all correctly. I think one option is probably the 100% for streets, bridges, trail, river, or parking-related improvements in infrastructure and public safety vehicles and related equipment.
Yes.
So, okay, and then two and three basically are out, but we should come back with an additional couple. Is that correct?
Well, preference of the council here.
I guess I still wouldn't mind seeing a percentage specifically for streets and bridges, like what Dan was saying earlier, whether that's 75 or 50. I mean, a minimum of 50 would would be fine, because that would leave extra funds to go other places, but at least that would assure that we do spend money on streets.
So, we should leave number two in.
Drop it to 50.
I'd be okay dropping it to 50, yeah, like Dan said.
Okay, those would be our two.
We'll work on a few options.
Yeah.
We'll see if we can get somewhat specific in some areas, not in others. We'll kind of look at justifying the rest of it, from parking to the other, and kind of give specifics of why we think it could be in there.
Parking, I guess I'm a little struggling why we would, I mean, what do we, we just have that in there in case we want to redo a parking lot, or?
Parking's kind of been an issue in the past, and I think some of it was, you know, if we have needs for reconstruction of parking areas, which can get a little pricey.
Or opportunities for parking that come up, you know, that we have to jump, and we'd have the lost funds. Yeah, I think.
Because some of it is, if you have something happen and you don't have the time to act, you would have that fund available if you chose to utilize it, if it's one of those specified items. Otherwise, it may take a while to accumulate that funding, or pull it from a different area. But that's some of why it was in there, was parking lots, you know, whether it needs to be resurfacing, or if there is an area it can be transferred into a parking lot, you know, things like that, as we struggle with downtown parking and things like that.
Yeah, I know there's been some talk, well, it's been nicer that we do have parking on West Bremer now behind Water Street, but even on the West Bremer, on the south side, there's always been talk of buying lots behind those businesses and giving them some parking.
This would allow that to happen.
This would allow that, yeah.
It's kind of the thought, Brian, and then.
Any other thoughts? Okay, bring it back to the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Regular business item number six is mayoral appointments. I'd like to reappoint Bill Wessendorf to the Civil Service Commission, reappoint Jim Jansen to the Library Board of Trustees, reappoint Deanna McHugh to the Library Board of Trustees, reappoint Linda Podolsky to the Library Board of Trustees, reappoint Kip LaDeji to the Upper Cedar Watershed Management Improvement Authority, and run length to the same authority. Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion? All in favor, signify with yes.
Yes.
Those with no. Congratulations to those people who have been reappointed. We have some reports of minutes. We have the Historic Preservation Commission minutes for October 22nd, January 28th, February 25th, or February 25th, and March 24th. Any comments on any of those four?
Yeah, obviously, a lot of the talk has been around the Green Bridge, as, you know, they're in favor of saving that and restoring that, so. Other things, they're planning to do the celebration for having the new downtown historic district, so as people may or may not know, but the city has been working with a consultant that has actually gotten neighborhoods in our town registered on the National Historic Registry. So, the southeast neighborhood that has the Green Bridge is in the National Historic Registry. My neighborhood is in the National Historic Registry. The downtown district is now in the National Historic Registry, so those are really cool things, and then they're still working on getting signs for those areas.
Signs are all coming.
So that you can know when you come into a national historic neighborhood or area. You'd have an entry sign, and then there'd be topper signs on top that would tell you that you're in a historic preservation district. So, I think cool things like that, and I think it's neat, so.
Wonderful words. Any other comments? Officially received, Library Board of Trustees minutes for February 9th and March 8th. Any comments on those? Officially received, Planning and Zoning Commission workshop minutes from April 7th. Comments? Officially received, Library Board of Trustees minutes from April 12th. Comments? Officially received, Planning and Zoning Commission minutes from May 5th. Officially received, Economic Development Commission minutes from May 10th. Comments? Officially received, Golf Commission minutes from May 10th.
The Golf Commission, I was actually able to make this one, because I took lunch off and came back to Waverly for it, so, which was nice, but it was just more of a review of the pond project, and we're now good with the pond number two, they call it, which is just to the left of the green of hole two, and that's not leaking water anymore. And then, just more talk of what would happen in the future next year with the reshaping of holes. Was it 15 and 17, right? Yeah.
You speak 50, 70.
Yes, you're right. They keep, you guys keep changing the numbers in there. Just, that pond's going to be much bigger. It's the irrigation pond, so it's going to be redone, reshaped. Lots of different cool things coming with that next year, so. But overall, the golf course financials are in good shape, and everything's going well.
Thank you for the comments. Others officially received, staff comments. Others officially received, staff comments?
Uh, no, sir, I don't have any unless staff has any, they'd like to add. No, sir.
Okay, city council, let's start with my side, Edie?
I have no comments, thank you.
No comment.
David? Mike? Whoa, this is unusual, nobody so far.
I'll break the trend there.
Yeah, thank you.
It's interesting to read through the planning and zoning minutes, the work that you're doing on the smaller lots and those type of things. Is there a timeline that we might see some of that come before the council for input?
Maybe July, maybe July, we have a meeting in, later in June, the 20th or the Wednesday in that, in that week. And we're still refining the final version, and then we'll draft that R1, R1S, the final draft of that, and then present it for. I'm hoping to present it either for a study session, if that's what you want first, or if you want to go right to a review of it and a vote on it, that's fine, I, I guess I wanted to get some feel for what the council felt about that.
It just seems the last couple of developments have been smaller lights, lot sizes, the Omni development have had good success, so.
We're hoping to get something done this year for next season, before new subdivisions next season.
Seems to be the trend of moving away from the large lots and those type of things, so if we can help a developer along, that'd be great.
Anything more?
No.
Councilman Gabe?
I just have a question, I know chambers here are the city, but an update on the West Bremer work that's being done in front of Water Street Grill. We have a timeline on how close that is getting to completion and wrapping up all the work down there.
I want to say end of the week, is that fairly accurate?
Yeah.
Yes, I did have a, come to, go ahead.
You already passed.
Well, I mean, David brought up talking about the, having a session on or discussion of the, the spending of the lost money prior to the budget type stuff. And we talked about in the past even doing with that with the utility fees as possibility, I'm almost wondering if we need to be looking at some kind of a strategic planning or council session to look at some of these timelines and kind of look at some of those things that maybe if we do want to have some preliminary input into the budget, some of those pieces that go into the budget before the entire budget gets processed. And kind of discuss when we'd like to kind of look at those each, you know, because those would be different pieces to look at and rather than try to throw them all together at one time. Maybe do it, you know, just kind of lay out a timeline for what we think would be appropriate for doing some of that.
Yeah, we're filling up study sessions as we go forward, I know we're looking for the joint meeting with the economic development soon. We'll have the final study session for the Highway 3 reconstruction also in late summer, and so when we start getting into falls, when I was looking at trying to pick up the secondary discussion on our infrastructure that we had earlier, then start getting into local option, pre-budget items that you would like parameter set, that kind of thing, probably about October. So we can kind of get things going budget-wise in November, December, and up through, so we get to the January meetings, but we're looking September, October, somewhere in there.
I think the last time you talked about kind of getting Spear on board and turning your whiteboard into more of that, after they were on.
Yeah, no, that'll happen this month, so we'll get that going, and we should have a better idea where things are setting, and then at least have the option knowing that it can be funded and what the impact will be, and then we can reshuffle as need be. So, but yeah, that'll be coming again this month, we'll get that done, and so I'm hoping for September, October to reiterate all that as it pertains to going into the budget, so.
We had also talked in the past, and I can't remember if we did it two years ago or this year now, but all the extra outside source, outside funding requests that we get from all the different organizations, counties and, you know, all that kind of stuff. We had talked about having that as it being like a separate study session where we weed through those instead of doing it, you know, right at the budget time and trying to hear everyone and talk through it.
We kind of did that beforehand.
Yeah, I was going to say, I brought that last summer and I was asked why it was brought, and from you.
That's all right, they blend as, as time goes on.
But we, yeah, I remember us wanting to do that, just so that we didn't get stuck on a Saturday fighting over, you know, 15 different things.
We'd kind of done that in advance either last summer or last fall, that we kind of made a statement on which ones we were willing to continue and not take on any new.
And if we do do that, it'd be nice to have them present, you know, like they do when they come and tell us why they need the money and that kind of stuff, so.
Vern, are there any observations, anything you'd like to say, having watched this council in action for an evening?
Well, I think you've gotten through this thing really fast, and that's great.
Unusual, too.
It's, it's good to observe the discussion, I've watched it on TV a couple of times, and it's a little more difficult to get the perception as you do here.
Yeah.
But you've had good discussion in terms of trying to sort some things out, as I see it, thank you.
Thank you, we'll take that as a compliment, thank you very much. Mayoral comments, just a question, I'm just throwing this at you, but in the last years, we've not done study sessions in July and August, it certainly is convenient for a lot of us who need to weagle some other times and for other things. Is the agendas of July and August so heavy that we can't do some of these discussion items during the regular meeting like we did tonight? Or is, or is that so possible?
I think that's up to council yourself, if you want to add on to those sessions, we can certainly do that, I know the July one, we're looking at economic development was a joint one.
June is the Bremer Avenue update.
End of this month, that's our second.
June we have to do because of that, but July and August I'm more interested in.
I think July was really economic development.
Council reaction to that, I mean.
August was the third Highway 3 reconstruction meeting.
We tried to go with regular meetings only.
Fine with them, but I know I will be gone the last week of July, so, for conventions.
And I will be too, so, okay.
I'll probably miss the.
Oh, the regular meeting? Well, i- if we have it, but I'm suggesting that we don't have it.
I, if they're useful, I like.
The Economic Development Commission has at least tentatively put that on their calendars, so.
They were shooting for that, yes, sir.
I, I think, I think it could be scheduled at any time, I mean, it's, it's, but I think it's one of those that we were waiting for direction from the council and when they wanted to do that.
That would be the 25th, right, that'd be our, 18th would be our normal meeting in July, 25th would be our study session, because I'll, I'll be gone that week, but.
Yeah, so that we could move the study session items as a part of a regular meeting.
Part of the reason I ask on the R1 rezoning, to see how that was going to match up with the economic development discussion, because I think the two of them.
I don't think it will, I mean, I don't think it's really going to be related in that sense, I mean, I think the commission is more of a discussion with general principles, general trends, and the R1 is very specific, it's going to be real language that is actually there to crunch on and.
Thinking more that a lot of our discussion in the Economic Development Commission lately seems to be around housing and changing the ordinance may help with housing, those type of things, so.
Just to soon have them, I mean, I know one thing, in August, we do have five Mondays, so we will get two Mondays off in that month, so even if we had a study session, it'd be the first, the 15th, and the 22nd, we still have the 8th and the 29th off, so I mean, that's one benefit.
Make September 5th off, too, so it'll be three weeks in a row.
There you go, yeah, so.
Well, that'd be great.
So, even if we had normal study sessions.
There's not, that's not a down, that's an up, man.
Even if we still have normal study sessions, we're going to have quite a bit of time.
We don't have enough agenda.
July, July 4th, are you guys just not, not having it that week and not, and nothing between July 4th and July 18th?
That's another one.
No, that's not correct, according to the code, if it falls on July 4th, we have it the following Tuesday, so then we would then have it three weeks in a row. Not the next day, the following Monday.
Okay, so it'll be, it would be the 11th?
Yes.
Correct.
July would be 11th, 18th, and 23rd.
Yeah.
Two weeks off in August and then September, we've got three weeks in a row again also, so.
Yeah, so we, yeah.
Anyway, my mayoral nudge is still, let's take July and August off and move everything in. What was that, the pro temp is going to temper that, I think, but. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
We've got.
That's tapped.
Just real quick.
Yeah, we do have communications.
We had no YouTube tonight, the, something about the encoder couldn't talk to the system, so, so that's beyond me. So what we'll do is we'll, we've got the DVD, we'll see if we can upload the DVD onto YouTube, so at least people will be able to watch it later on.
Okay, let's get new equipment. Communications, I'm sorry, I missed communications.
That was on the geese.
Hopefully.
The geese.
Oh, the geese.
We're going to put up chicken wire to keep the geese out.
That's the communication.
We're not talking about chickens, we're talking about geese.
Okay.
Geese can't fly over chicken wire.
Are there any communications from you, is that just the geese? That's only the geese, all right, is there anything you'd like to say on that one?
Eric, did you have another question on anything? Tad's got it?
They're asking you?
I think we're.
You want to talk about that? Using the chicken wire to keep geese out? Right.
Okay.
We think we're going to start installing that tomorrow.
Okay.
So just to clarify, is it true that geese cannot fly over chicken wire?
During their molt, which begins end of June and lasts for about six weeks, no, they cannot.
I see, all right, thank you.
And it's very difficult for them to walk over it, too.
They can climb. We probably won't talk about it tonight, but I'm assuming you have something in the paper, so if people are walking through the park, they wonder why this fence is up and maybe put something in the paper on what it's for, how long it's going to be there, it's coming down. We're going to try to make it visible, too, so people. All that good stuff. Trip over. We love our geese, we're trying to take care of them. We don't love our geese. Elsewhere. No, I'll qualify that, we don't love our geese in Coleman Park, I'll take them anyplace else.
All right, motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify with yes.
Yes. Adjourn.